This meeting of the Garner Town Council, the April 4th regular schedule meeting, to order, and will begin tonight, and I'll ask our town clerk to call the roll.
Ma'am, I'm present.
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews.
Here. And we're all present, and thank you, council, for being here and on time tonight. I'm going to recognize now Councilmember Phil Matthews, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also have responsibility for our invocation to see him, if he will, please stand, if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seen.
Let's pray. Oh gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we've become before you this evening, and Lord is thanking you for your mercy on us as a people. Lord, we pray for our country as we're going through a lot of difficult times right now that we can remain peaceful and resolve issues and turn things around. I pray for our military, Lord, worldwide, and their families, Lord. We lift up those that are sick and hurting, Lord, and just give them a special comfort. Grant this council night wisdom to make good decisions that will be good for the town of Garner and long-lasting. Grant us wisdom. Lord, we ask these prayers in your name. Amen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Ms. Gibson, do we have anyone sign up for petitions and comments this evening?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. If there's anyone here who came for the express purpose of wanting to make a comment or petition to the council, if you would let it be known at this time, I would potentially recognize you. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will move to the next item of the agenda. Which council is the adoption of the agenda? You have it before you. What say you?
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion properly made and seconded, all in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
If you oppose, no, and there is none. Okay, we'll move right into presentations. We have one this evening, and I'll recognize Ms. Sarah Warren, dead in capital projects update. Good evening, Ms. Warren, and Mr. Beck. Good to see you both.
Good evening.
Evening.
So Sarah and I are going to work together on this, but we're going to give you an update on kind of where things stand with the bond program. We are getting close to the first sale, the first installment sale of the 2021 bonds, so wanted to give you an update on the status of where things are with that, as well as the capital projects that those bond funds will finance. Just as a refresher, the 2021 bond referendum was passed overwhelmingly by the citizens of Garner. All four bond questions garnered terrific support. This is the installment schedule for the sale of the bonds that we have been utilizing as part of our debt model that Davenport runs for us. This is kind of how we had originally broken up the installments for selling the bonds and based our debt capacity and debt modeling off of this. So the first bond sale would be coming up in just about seven weeks or so. That would be for $21.6 million. And then we would have two additional sales spaced two years apart, $30.2 million for the second sale, $17.1 million for the final sale, for a total of $69 million that was We also have a couple of other non-bond projects that are on the horizon that have fed into the debt model that you've seen Davenport present. One of those is an installment financing for the what's referred to as the Town Hall Annex Project, which is the Forest Hills building adjacent to us here that was purchased by the town for additional office space, storage space for town offices. We also would use some of the bond proceeds to reimburse for the purchase of that building, to reimburse for the purchase of property for a future Public Works campus expansion, and also reimbursement for the former bank building adjacent to Town Hall as well. So all of those add up to just over $6 million that we would be looking at going out for a bank financing later on in the summer of 2023. And then also on the horizon is the potential downtown parking deck project, which is another financing that has fed into the debt model and is currently incorporated into that, and that's at an amount up to $5.5 million. We recently asked Davenport to update the debt model for us, and we asked them to put in a couple of new assumptions, one of which is an annual use of revenue savings plan, $410,000 for capital maintenance needs, which we commonly refer to as our PERFORM program. We had mentioned that idea and presented that idea to council back in the fall of last year as a possible, you know, good use of RSP money. It fits with the spirit of the program to fund capital needs and debt service. And obviously, with the new facilities we have, the older facilities as well, we have ongoing maintenance needs for those that we could fund, at least partially through RSP money. So we have asked them to update the model, which I will show you soon, based on $410,000 annually to be appropriated from revenue savings plan for building maintenance needs. The other change to the model that we asked Davenport to incorporate is one-time use of some funding to implement our pay-in-class study. That's at a cost of about $3.7 million. We would look to fund that through two sources. One would be a one-time use of additional RSP money to pay for debt service. So we have our debt service on the existing bonds, as well as some other debt, and then we'll have the new debt service. So we would take an additional amount from revenue savings plan to cover debt service that would normally be covered through general fund revenues or other operating revenues. And we would use that money to pay debt service, and then in turn, that would free up capacity in the operating budget to partially pay for the first year of the pay-in-class implementation. And we would also propose using ARP funds to fund the other portion of that. It's not half and half, but it's, you know, breaks out to, you know, roughly 50/50 between RSP and ARP. This is very small, but I do have a couple of blown-up sections from this coming up in other slides, but this just shows you the complete updated model. And I wanted to draw your attention to a couple of things here. You'll see there the circled area, that shows that one-time use of RSP to pay for debt service, which again frees up operating funds to implement the pay-in-class study. So that shows that $2 million usage in fiscal year 2024. And then this shows sort of the impact to the revenue savings plan. So we, you'll see there, the rectangle right in the middle, we have the 2 cent that's already programmed in, 2 cent tax increase programmed in to pay for debt service on the new bonds. You'll see on the far right column, the running revenue savings plan balance, and with the new assumptions we asked Davenport to program into the model, which again is $410,000 annually for PERFORM, and the one-time use of revenue savings plan to implement pay-in class, we have one year where we have a deficit in the revenue savings plan. So in fiscal year 2030, we would not have enough in the plan to cover the debt service that we're supposed to pay using revenue savings plan in that particular fiscal year. All the other years were still in good shape. So looking at that shortfall and possible options to overcome that or impacts, there are a couple of things to remember with the Davenport model, is there are very conservative growth factors built into the model. For instance, we have tax reval coming next fiscal year. Their model always assumes revenue neutral on the tax reval year, so they always assume a revenue neutral tax rate. The other revenue streams are budgeted conservatively as far as, you know, growth rates year over year. And then also, we know that the plan has grown much faster and has grown much bigger than it was originally estimated when it was implemented. So we feel like with those, you know, those known factors that are in the plan, that it's likely that we would be able to overcome that deficit, or possibly could overcome that deficit through just natural revenue growth and other things, based on the conservatism that's built into the plan. Again, we're talking about a deficit that's seven years out, so a lot can change between now and then. There are some options that Davenport has given us that, you know, actions that council could take to overcome that deficit in other ways, other than, you know, just waiting to see if natural growth overcomes it. There's the option to do, you know, essentially two-thirds of a penny tax increase in fiscal year 2030, which could overcome the deficit. There's also the option to do about a tenth of a penny additional tax increase for fiscal year 2024, in addition to the 2 cent that's already programmed for bond debt. We could delay or defer issuing $2.9 million of bonds. And then also, if the tax base grows larger than the factor we're using in the model, we would overcome that. So it would need to grow essentially a quarter of a percentage point each year more than the 5% we have programmed into the model. So those are potential options. Like I mentioned, though, I believe we can most likely overcome that in seven years' time, just through natural growth and other things. It's not a huge deficit, it's about $500,000, and we feel pretty confident that we can overcome that. I will turn it over to Sarah.
So David's talking about the funding of the projects, and so I'm going to talk about how we're budgeting and appropriating for our bond program, starting in FY '24. So this is just a reminder of the current allocation for our bond projects. About $24 million for streets and sidewalks, $35.5 in parks, $2.95 for stormwater, and $6.5 million for Fire Station 5. Most of the conversation right now is going to be focused on street and sidewalk projects and park projects, but I will note, and there's a slide at the end that reminds you that we already have identified a million and a half in ARP dollars to cover a current gap identified in Fire Station 5. So just keep that in mind. But really, we're going to focus on some of the programmatic changes that you're going to start seeing when we get through the budget process with our street, sidewalk, and park So we've been very fortunate in receiving grants for some of our projects. We currently have a LAP grant for the White Oak Roundabout. Parks has gotten a part of grant, so that's a state-funded grant of about $400,000 for Jürgen. And then we've also had some federal earmarks for the Senior Center and Ran Mill Streetscapes. And staff has really been aggressive in seeking additional funding, so we've got a bunch of pending funding. We've got $2 million that we'll likely receive from the county, from the major facilities fund for Jürgen, really looking to advance the tourism in the area, and Jürgen being part of that advancement. Some federal funds through Congressman Nichols' office. We've submitted the Meadowbrook Dam and stream improvement projects for federal funding, and then we've requested a state earmark of $400,000 for the inclusive playground at White Deer Park. So these are just some pending things that are out there that, if they would help close some of the gaps, we may have. So thinking about the challenges with our current bond program, obviously, we have market challenges. We're all aware of the increasing costs of construction and the availability of raw materials. We're also seeing increasing costs and litigation associated with land acquisition for White Oak Roundabout and Joan Sausage North. Utility relocation, our great partners at Duke Energy, making sure that we are working on the same timetable sometimes creates some challenges. So that just increases timelines. And then thinking about scope creep, and so by this meaning, design element changes to projects, assessments and evaluations that may not have been initially included, and increases or changes to amenities in the project's scope. And as much as we love our federal funding, they do come with additional costs and processes that increase the timeline. So our LAP grants are a great tool for us, but they do require additional oversight from an environmental perspective, as well as providing fair market value during our right-of-way acquisition and buying America for our construction materials. So all of these things I've just mentioned can potentially limit our ability to fully fund projects that are currently planned. So increasing costs for projects that are currently underway might eat up available funding in the future. So it's just important to note that. But we also have to consider that the current timeline and stacking of our current projects would increase the amount of money that we would need to sell in April, or I'm sorry, in May. So above that $21.6 that David showed you, selling more bonds in May would mean that we would have to add an additional $2 million to our FY '24 budget to cover the debt requirements. And then also because of our timelines, we would be looking at adding almost $2 million in operating costs for Jürgen coming online. So that would be staffing, equipment, and other operating costs that would be required to manage that facility from the parks and public works side. Also, because of the way our current projects are stacked and the timelines that are out there right now, we've really front-loaded a lot of work in the current fiscal year over the next two fiscal years, and so that's going to put some constraints on staff to effectively manage the projects. And so there may be a natural slowing of that if projects are stacked in that way with our staffing. But then there's nothing really programmed beyond FY '26 with the current timeline. So just kind of thinking about staff workload balance. And then I think we also have to be prepared of a recession. If that happens at the federal level, it's going to limit the availability of federal funds that we have grown to love so much, but it also may limit the ability to access funds that we may already kind of be in line for if things get to that place. So those are just some things to keep in mind. So what have we done to address this issue for FY '24? For streets and sidewalks, looking at the Joan Sausage North project, based upon what we're seeing with timelines, we believe that the right-of-way and utility relocation will likely extend into FY '25. So that's going to help us push out the construction just because of that piece of the project. We're also going to seek LAP grant funding that would help us with the construction side of that, completing that construction side. So moving the construction dollars to FY '26 would better align with that timeline for LAP grant funding. I think there was a recent approval in $2 million in bond program for pavement preservation. We have now taken that $2 million that was funded for pavement preservation and put it towards Joan Sausage in order to close the gaps identified there. And then beyond Garner Road and Aversboro Road sidewalks, there will no longer, there will not be any more available funding for sidewalk projects after those projects are For parks, so looking at Jürgen, we are going to move the construction funding to FY '25. This is going to help with our bond capacity, so we won't have to add that $2 million to the FY '24 budget. We think that's going to be a natural alignment with the pace that things are moving at the moment. And then by moving that, we would look to move the operating impacts to FY '26, which would help our five-year model, because we're going to have some significant staffing needs associated with that project. We're also seeking federal funds to assist with our Meadowbrook Dam project, as I mentioned earlier with Congressman Nichols' office. What that will do is we've programmed bond dollars to help with that project. If we were able to receive federal funds, that would give us greater bond capacity for potential cost overruns that might occur with Meadowbrook. And then we've moved construction for Meadowbrook to FY '25 to better align with the Meadowbrook Dam project. So that's in design, we're applying for funding, and so we think that that would better align with the current trajectory. So this is the total of our current street and sidewalk programs. All of the programs that are currently allocated using bond dollars are listed here. The total is $32 million, and we have $8 million of that is other funding aside from bond funds. So you can see that we have currently allocated all of the available bond dollars. So if we choose to move forward with these projects and cost estimates come in over budget, we will not have available bond funding to cover those overages, if we decide to keep these projects on the plan. And then similarly with parks. So right now, we've got $5.6 million in other revenue. This doesn't include the earmark from Congressman Nichols' office or the potential for the Meadowbrook Dam. We did program in the county funding because we have a better sense that we're likely to receive that money. So based upon all the information that we have today, we do not have any money left in parks projects should these projects come in over budget. So here is how the bond program kind of realigns. For streets and sidewalks, we've really taken all the money available in what has been allocated for transit and a large chunk of sidewalk project money to finish out our street and roadway projects. With parks, we've taken a lot from our rehabilitation allocation, a little bit from our greenways, and all of our future land acquisition money to put into the park development. And then just as a reminder, the current, Garner share of the Fire Station 5 is currently budgeted at $8 million. Six and a half of that is from bond funding, and one and a half, we would anticipate using ARP dollars. That's the end of our presentation. We are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you so much for the information. Lot of area covered, and a lot of things we want to do, hope to get done. So I'll see what questions council has for you, and I'll start to my right with Mr. Vance, if he has any.
Yes, thank you, Sarah, for the brief, and I think that you caught me nodding my head on the cost projections for the projects. And I know that we have the cost projection for the parks and also for the other projects, we already have those estimates in. And with the way things have been going relative to the pandemic and with materials that all over the country, there's been an increase in construction costs and construction materials. So I'm just saying, we just have to be ready to brace for that when they come in.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go back and forth. I go to Mr. Matthews on my left and then come back to my right.
Great presentation. There's a lot to digest here, and one thing evitable is change. As you mentioned, over the next few years, things can go from one extreme to the other. Sometimes it seems like by the week or by the month, things happen. So at least you've got a game plan. Who knows where it could be by this time next year. But thank you for what you've got here. Got a lot to digest here.
We'll have a lot more to offer next month as we move through the budget.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Dellinger, questions?
Thanks for the information. And slides aren't numbered, but on page three, where you have the initial model for the debts and the $21 million, $30 million, $17, the year-by-year, the tranches, what, you said that's what you were operating from originally, and you said you've moved to something a little different, and that would be an extra $2 million in debt service. So what is sort of the, you seem to have like eliminated an option for a larger first issuance and then sort of backed into a different plan. So what was, what do those look like now? What are we looking at for the first bond issue and the second? And what was your first, your first thought was probably closer to $50 million or so on the first?
to finish out our street and roadway projects. With parks, we've taken a lot from our rehabilitation allocation, a little bit from our greenways, and all of our future land acquisition money to put into the park development. And then, just as a reminder, the current, Garner share of the Fire Station 5 is currently budgeted at $8 million. Six and a half of that is from bond funding, and one and a half, we would anticipate using ARP dollars. That's the end of our presentation. We are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you so much for the information. Lot of area covered, and a lot of things we want to do, hope to get done. So I'll see what questions council has for you, and I'll start to my right with Mr. Vance, if he has any.
Yes, thank you, Sarah, for the brief. And I think that you caught me nodding my head on the cost projections for the projects. And I know that we have the cost projection for the parks and also for the other projects. We already have those estimates in. And with the way things have been going relative to the pandemic and with materials that, all over the country, there's been an increase in construction costs and construction materials. So I'm just saying, we just have to be ready to brace for that when they come in.
Yes.
Okay, I'll go back and forth. I go to Mr. Matthews on my left and then come back to my right.
Great presentation, there's a lot to digest here. And one thing, evitable is change. As you mentioned, over the next few years, things can go from one extreme to the other. And sometimes it seems like by the week or by the month, things happen. So at least you've got a game plan. Who knows where it could be by this time next year. But thank you for what you've got here. Got a lot to digest here.
We'll have a lot more to offer next month as we move through the budget.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Dellinger, questions?
Thanks for the information. And slides aren't numbered, but on page three, where you have the initial model for the debts and the $21 million, $30 million, $17, the year-by-year, the tranches. You said that's what you were operating from originally. And you said you've moved to something a little different, and that would be an extra $2 million in debt service. So what is sort of the, you seem to have like, eliminated an option for a larger first issuance and then sort of backed into a different plan. So what was, what do those look like now? What are we looking at for the first bond issue and the second? And what was your first, your first thought was probably closer to $50 million or so on the first go-around?
This is, this is the original schedule.
Right.
And we were, our whole model was built on this schedule. And in actuality, the budget was built on this model. So when we started getting all the cash flow information based upon current project schedules, that 23 number started creeping up. So our strategy was to bring it back down to the schedule that, the original schedule that we had built our debt model on.
What it had creeped up to? Because I know that the timelines on some of the projects is moving faster. And then sort of like wanting intentionally slow down projects that often cases slow down themselves?
Yeah, it was, it was around $47 million. And like Sarah said, we kind of were able to pull back to the original number because we sort of sharpened our pencils with the project managers, engineering staff, and kind of looked at, okay, we have some fairly aggressive timelines that we have penciled in for these projects, but realistically, what's it going to look like? And what are we going to be able to manage all at the same time? So that's when we started pacing them a little more realistically, I think.
Okay. Another comment or question, just for clarification. There was the proposal to pull, it was injected into the model, another 410 from revenue savings on an annual basis, and then a one-time $2 million for debt service assistance this year, not next year, this budget. Okay. I have a couple more questions, but I'll go around.
Okay, we'll circle back. Ms. Behringer?
Very sobering presentation, but very thorough. And we have to do what we have to do. So thank you for your hard work and for your advice about which way, which direction to go in.
And Mr. Singleton?
I just wanted to email today to confirm the $20 million on Joan Sausage. Make sure, we might need to have the fire department here or first responders to give us oxygen. That project started out when we were in 2021, before the bonds out, $4.5 million. Went to $6.5 million. Went to 10, to 12, to 14, now we're at 20 million. And as you respond to other towns that are doing the same thing, there was an article in the last few months about Raleigh had numerous projects. So it was a $17 million project out of six forks, and it's over $32 million. And that was six months ago. My guess is it's well in the upper 30s.
When I, when I left the city of Raleigh, it was at 60 million.
That was in the teens at one time. At one time, it was 17 or 18. It was up to 60 million. That answers that. And the fire department also, our first part was going to be $3.5 and $4.5 and $6, and went to $6.5, and that's eight. And actually, I think we've got another $200,000 we're doing for something, but anyway, for the shell. So another $1.7 million there. So the cost increases, the scope creep. Mr. Kennedy, that was our favorite term. Mr. Kennedy's was scope creep. It sure set in. And as Ms. Behringer said, these are sobering numbers. Thank you for the information right now.
I do want to offer one thing. You talked about the increasing costs, and I understand the concern there. We do have some excellent project managers on staff that we've, that David and I and the team have been working really closely with. I think based upon all the information we have today, these numbers are as good as they're going to be. Really, the increases are going to come with the unknown market conditions. And so it's really just being aware of what we can control and being prepared for what we can't.
Okay, thank you. I'll go back one more time around. I think Mr. Dellinger said he wanted a couple of follow-ups. Is that right?
Yes, thank you. The assumptions, how tied in is the modeling that was redone to updated capital improvement plans and projects that are needed sort of by department? I know Parks and Rec has significant ones over the next 10 years. Because it seems like the modeling was sort of redone with an assumption of adding no additional debt and zeroing out kind of revenue savings by 2030. And based on, you know, Public Works facility, other park facilities, probably need another bond issue by the end of the decade. And so then you've zeroed out the revenue savings at that point, and you're still paying for the bonds we've just issued. So I'm a little, we can talk further at some point about how the capital projects that we have planned are plugging into this. Because it seems like it's sort of designed to make the bonds work, and there are a lot more projects outside of the bonds, and then unanticipated things that are going to come up over the next seven years, and so.
I'm going to try and answer this, but David can come back as well. So one of the things that we've been working on through this budget process is working on our capital process and allocation. So right now, we, to your point, we don't have a whole lot of dedicated money outside of our bond funding for capital. But we have been able to work with staff through the budget process to identify small-scale capital needs and large-scale capital needs. So we will be moving into next year's development with, armored with that list to try and work through what we can fund, how we can fund it, and some proposals to get us to where we need to be. And so that's just from a small-scale planning. We do have our perform budget, which we've now allocated a little bit more to help with those small-scale facility needs. But I'll let David kind of speak to the big debt installment projects.
Yeah, what we have plugged in currently are the ones that we sort of have a known cost estimate for. So some of the other projects that are a little further down the line, like Public Works, that we don't really have even really a ballpark figure for at this point, we will have to plug, you know, that'll have to be factored in at some point if council decides they want to move forward with that. We will have to add those assumptions into the model down the line.
I guess that's where my, just my concern on modeling this out to zero out without knowing those are on the horizon, knowing they don't have a direct cost, but then also making the conscious decision to zero out the debt repayment capacity. But I'll spend more time with this, and y'all spend more time with it. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, and we, so we didn't, just to clarify, we didn't ask Davenport to model it to zero it out. It's just, we said, these are the things we propose to use, show us what it does to the model, and it did zero it out in that one year. Yeah.
I'll go back around to council again. I had one question that I think I know the answer to, and maybe it's repeat. But the LAP funding for the White Oak, around about $1.6 million, that is a solid grant that's already been approved and is on the books, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead.
Follow-up on Joan Sausage. We talked, I think last fall, about working on a LAP grant for that process too. So I'm assuming that's, because obviously we, it's the only way we can complete a 20-plus million dollar project is to get some, get some other type of funding assistance.
Yeah, I think, I think LAP grant, right now, we think LAP grant will get us there. Pending anything else, that might be something we come back and revisit.
Is that right now? As you noted here, it's been pushed back to at least '26 to start construction. And part of that is the process of LAP grant, which slows things down. Because we thought the roundabout would be up and running by now. I thought we could have gone out there and built it by now. But because of the process and some right-of-way issues that Ms. Jones has been working with, and utility relocations, that's a big issue, as you noted. Okay, thank you. I was just curious about Joan Sausage. Does it grow so much? Y'all had mentioned the possibility of some type of LAP or some type of funding assistance through a CAMPo or a model they may have.
That project, the Joan Sausage LAP funding, scored very well last time. We were just, just on the edge of getting significant funding before they cut it off. And so we decided to wait and reapply. If we just delayed a project just by a few more months, we stand a good chance of getting significant funding through LAP. That's our hope. Of course, there'll be a whole nother round of other projects that we'll be competing with. But since we scored so well the first time, we think we have a good chance of getting a decent amount of funding for it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Behringer, anything else?
Yeah, I'd just like to interject. I think it's important for us to remember that historically, our nation, and of course, our cities and towns have weathered situations like this. It's not fun, it's not comfortable, but we get through it and we move on. And I think we need to adopt an element of a positive attitude, not overdo it, but realize that we will get through it.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, you go back.
Just to follow up on the, on the LAP funding. So I know we're speculating here, and of course, a lot of this is. But if all goes well, out of that 20 we're looking at, are you looking at it in the entirety or a portion? What are your thoughts at this time?
We won't, we're not able to fully fund it with LAP grant. So I think we're thinking, I think our range is somewhere between $5 and $7 million would be the match. I think $7 million is pushing it. But it would just be a portion of that, and then we would have to match it. I forget, John, you may remember the actual rules.
You can apply for up to 80% of the project. But typically, when we start to, when we go through some preliminary discussions, we get a sense of what else is out there. And we sometimes make strategic decisions to only apply for 70% or 75% to just try to increase our odds of getting selected. Because there's also some magic in the amount you're asking for as well as when you're asking for it. But 80/20 is the most aggressive it could be. And the ones we've been most successful with, I think we've been in about the 70% to 75% range.
Have we already, I should know this, I guess. The Part F grant money, are we maxed out on that? Or are we eligible to apply for any more there? Does anybody know?
Maria would be.
Oh, there's Maria, I'm sorry.
She tried to shift the audience.
Yeah, there you go, Maria. Yeah, thank you. And if you don't know the answer to that, it's okay. I didn't contact you in advance. But I know we've been fortunate as a town to get some part of money.
Typically, we could apply to Part F for other projects that are not already a Part F project or for new components of an existing Part F. So at the time that Jürgen comes into Phase Two, we would be eligible to apply for another Part F grant. That's the answer. But for this particular Phase One, that's it.
Okay, that's what I, thank you, thank you very much. Counsel, let's see, we'll go around maybe one more time.
I have a question. The LAP funding, we know that it closed, Reese well, it closed whenever. When is the next round of LAP funding?
Applications are in the fall of each year. For decisions, in the spring, for award the following fall. So it's really a year process out from the year that it would be awarded. So there's an opportunity every fall to apply.
So I think to answer the question of, we would apply this fall for LAP grant, and it would potentially be awarded. If we were to receive funding, it would be funding in FY '25, is when we would receive it.
Okay, should get your question answered. Sure, okay. Anything else, Mr. Singleton?
No, I thank Maria for telling us about opportunities to get more money at Jürgen in Phase Two. I just hope we're all alive when Phase Two starts. I mean, the way this is pushing things back. I mean, I'm not joking. And Mr. Dellinger mentioned have to have another referendum, which will have to be done because technically Public Works. I mean, not being, I mean, serious. It's going to be, it's a ways away. Because this pushes back Phase One. So thank you for that information.
Anything else for you? Down here, Mr. Dellinger, Ms. Behringer, okay. I want to thank you both for teaming up and working together there. What, I don't want to cut off your presentation. That did conclude everything, is that right? Okay, and we'll hear from one or both of you again pretty soon, I believe, right? The budget, okay, thank you. We're going to go to the consent agenda and ask, I'll ask council, if you will, to give me a motion on that. There are four items, as you see there. So what say you, counsel?
Do they accept the, most to receive the consent agenda?
Okay, motion probably made, suggested to approve the consent agenda. If you favor that, would you vote aye?
Aye.
There's opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, we're going to go now into the segment of our agenda under public hearings. And there are four of those, I believe, for. And Ms. Warren is back with us. This is a budget public hearing. I recognize her. And this is a chance where we will hear from members of the public if they care to make comments or receive and receive information. We will receive information regarding the FY '23, '24 budget. Ms. Warren, your show.
So I have a brief presentation. It's going to look very similar for those that remember last year's. I did want to remind you of our current important dates. So we had our kickoff in January, retreat where we gave you an update on the financial picture in February, at the council retreat. That same day, our budget submissions were due. And a couple weeks ago, we wrapped up all of our meetings with departments. So we are here at our April 4th, first budget hearing in anticipation of the recommended budget on May 2nd, a work session on the 11th, a subsequent hearing on the 16th, and budget adoption on June 6th. So similarly, we have put together an online form for those that would like to submit comments online. Our staff was, our communication staff graciously put this in a spotlight on our main page. So it's easy to find. I'll show that to you in a minute. And then our form looks very similar to last year's. Let's switch gears. So here's our homepage. And in this lovely, in the spotlight, we have our budget form. So if you click on this, it takes us to the information about the '24 budget. And then you can click on the form from this location. And it is a very simple Microsoft form. Enter your name, street address, and an email, and any information you want to share with staff and council as we prepare for this year's budget. So that's my little brief presentation. If there's any questions on that, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for Ms. Warren on this presentation? Mr. Matthews, Mr. Singleton? Ms. Behringer, Mr. Dellinger?
They're linked to the budget as well?
So the budget's not ready yet. So we'll, we will propose that. Once we propose the budget, the recommended budget will be available for citizens to review.
We have, we have two public hearings. One to kind of give preliminary input. And then once the budget is developed, public could get a chance to come to a meeting and have input on the recommended budget.
Okay, Mr. Vance, did I give you a chance?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to see if there's anyone who wishes to speak on the, on the budget. This is a public hearing. And if you do, let me, let me know. We'll ask you to come forward and come to the podium. Is there anybody here for that express purpose this evening? As you may have heard, there will be other opportunities, and the budget will be in a much different form on a future occasion when we're discussing it. So you'll have other opportunities. And you can go to the online site, right? Okay, anybody? Okay, hearing none and seeing none. You finished, Ms. Warren? Okay, all right. So I'm going to close that public hearing. Mr. Man, do you have anything before I do that?
I do.
This issue, okay. I wasn't expecting anything.
Nope.
Thought I'd give you that opportunity, okay. All right, we will now go to the next series of public hearings. Item number two is an annexation petition, ANX two-two sixteen William Towns, and I recognize our presenter, Mr. Reginald Bowie, who is a senior planner. Welcome, Mr. Bowie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we're gonna be presenting annexation request twenty-two sixteen Wilmington Road Town Homes. Owners of the property is Wilmington, Wilmington Town LLC. It is contiguous, property is located on Wilmington Road and you have Wake County pins, seventeen twenty-one zero eight fifty-six thirty-one, seventeen twenty-one zero eight seventy-two nineteen, seventeen twenty-one oh seven eighty-nine fifty-two, and is approximately eleven point nine five acres in size. Wilmington Road Town Homes CZMP dash twenty-one oh eight was approved April fourth, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two for up to seven point five units per acre. This petition follows a request for public water and sewer for Wilmington Road Town Homes CZMP dash twenty-one oh eight, approved April fourth, two thousand twenty-two for up to seven and a half, seven point five units per acre. Per Raleigh, Raleigh Garner merger agreement, an annexation petition is required for the extension of service. The recommendation is to adopt the ordinance. Here we have an aerial photo of the, of the site. That ends this presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay, let's see if counsel has any questions on this matter. Mr. Singleton, I'll start with you, if you have any. Ms. Behringer? Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Just a quick question, a little outcropping, it's a cemetery, is that correct? If I remember right?
It is.
Okay, yeah, that's what, no question.
Okay. And Mr. Matthews? And Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay. Was there anyone else who was gonna speak on this matter that you know of, Mr. Bowie?
No, sir, not this one, no, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions, comments? Conclude the public hearing and ask for a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, can you just verify that there's no one here for the public hearing?
Oh, okay, yes. So, yeah, if you're in the audience and you came for the public hearing, would you raise your hand? Okay, seeing none. All right. All right, thank you. So counsel, what say you on this item?
Move to adopt ordinance two zero two three five nine nine five.
Second.
Okay. Any, any further discussion before we vote and hearing and seeing none, I will ask you if you, excuse me, if you approve the motion. Did we make a motion?
Yes, we moved.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. If you approve the, the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, no. Okay, and the motion carries and is so ordered. The next item is a carryover from a previous meeting. Ms. Attorney, I meant to ask, do I just reopen this or do we need a motion to reopen it? Can I, as a presiding officer, just indicate it was adjourned as a continuation and then open it?
Right, since it was a continuation, it still remains open.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Bowie, you're still there, so would you lead our presentation on this matter?
Yes, sir.
For anything you have?
This is a continuing presentation for Seventy East Mobile Home Park Annexation, Annexation dash twenty-three oh two. The property is owned by ACG Garner LLC. It is located at one hundred Buffalo Road and it's twenty-six point four eight acres. This petition follows a request for public water at Seventy East Mobile Home Park. Public water, public sewer is not available. Per the Raleigh Garner merger agreement, an annexation petition is required for the extension of service and our recommendation is that you adopt annexation ordinance.
Okay. Is there, are there persons here this evening who came to speak on this matter and, okay, if you would come forward and give us your name and address, please, sir?
Sure. My name is Mike Conlin, CEO of Affordable Communities Group, and we own the Seventy East Mobile Home Park in Garner.
Okay, sir. Were you here to make a comment and/or answer questions or just answer questions?
I think just answer questions.
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, so, yeah, this was a continuation from before and I believe there was an interest in having you or someone representing company come and be here. So I will start with Mr. Dellinger on my right, I believe.
Evening, how are you doing?
Good.
Good. Got some questions about the annexation and about the future plans for the property.
Okay.
As zoned industrial, it's a mobile home park that's been there for at least forty or fifty years.
Correct.
It would, and it's being, it being located near future five forty, as you're aware as, as well. Have some concerns about what your, I imagine your plans are to develop that property into something other than a mobile home park before the end of the decade. Is that?
Perhaps, we haven't thought that far ahead. You know, our business is affordable housing and we have, I don't know, forty-seven mobile home parks, most of them in North Carolina, but throughout, about six thousand spaces. So at this point in time, for the foreseeable future, you know, we're gonna keep it, you know, affordable housing.
So what, what's the request for water then? What, why do you need to connect to the water?
The property obviously is old and the water system is, in our opinion, needs significant upgrades and for the quality, for the residents, we would prefer public water. That's what we have for most of our other parks. So it's just a situation where instead of, you know, putting tons of money into an upgrade of the water system that it is now, which is really old, if we can tap into public water, make the appropriate upgrades, it's just a better situation for the residents.
Are there existing water issues on the property?
Not at this point in time, but it, the system's old.
And is the plan to connect to the water and upgrade all the water infrastructure for all of the units there so that they're all, because I'm sure they're all forty or fifty years old as well?
Correct, yeah, whatever's required that needs to be done to make sure it's a better experience for the residents and, you know, I think it's just the well situation has gotten to be an outdated concept a little bit and so public water seems to be a better option for everybody.
I guess my question too, when you make the move to either sell the property or develop it in some fashion, what is your process for informing the residents who remain? Again, there's some that have been there a very long time.
Correct.
And in having conversations with some of them, they had noted that since your ownership, the lot rents had doubled and so.
Yeah.
So I, I guess I'm, when time comes, because once the annexation goes through, they become our residents.
Correct.
And so then when they start to get pushed off for one reason or another, they'll come here. And so I'm curious as to what your process is for informing folks and assisting them in, in transitioning to someplace else, because there will be a certain amount of hardship on some individuals when that happens.
Definitely. Yeah, I would like to make a comment, the, the lot rents have not doubled. They're four hundred and fifty dollars right now, which is well below the market in Wake County, so, you know, from that standpoint. But we have never gone through that process at this stage where we've redeveloped a park and moved people out. I've seen a lot of it happen over the last, you know, few years, obviously. I think it's been handled very poorly. There's one going on in Cary right now that's gonna be a big problem, I think. There's nowhere for these residents to go. It's, they can't get anything close to affordable what they have, so our feeling is we're gonna keep it affordable housing as long as possible. If the situation would come in ten years or the end of the decade, whatever it may be, that it's not feasible for everybody anymore, you know, we'd give them at least six-month notice and we'd probably, you know, pay at least the amount of cost to transfer their, or a unit to another park. The problem is there's really no other parks to go to at this stage of the game, so it's a tricky situation, but we're definitely willing to compensate them if that happens. I don't anticipate that happening anytime soon, obviously, in the next few years, but there's a right way to do it and a wrong way and you can't just give them sixty days' notice and, you know, a couple hundred bucks. It's gonna cost, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand a resident for sure to help them find another location.
I'll pass it, if anyone else has questions or comments.
Sure. Mr. Vance, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Questions.
Ms. Behringer, anything? Mr. Singleton?
Thank you for coming and answering the questions on, Mr. Dellinger was had concerned at the last meeting, so thank you, thanks for those questions.
Yeah, no problem.
And Mr. Matthews?
I took the opportunity to ride through, I was down in Clayton last Sunday, meeting some friends, let's drive through there and it, it was a happy-looking park, people sitting out, they looked like about ninety percent or more were RVs and we know that, well, I know personally that there are state representatives that live in some of the RV parks on Highway seventy because it's a lot more affordable than staying in a hotel downtown Raleigh. A lot of these people are working on the four forty loop and it can be a temporary thing and it's kind of the new norm and I thought it looked extremely neat. Everybody was sitting outside grilling and I'm ready to move forward on this thing, be done with you.
Appreciate that.
All right. Go one more round, yeah. Ms. Behringer, Mr. Dellinger?
Just one question or request that when the time comes to do that, that you reach out to the town preemptively?
Absolutely.
So that we could not be surprised?
Yeah, and I think we'd want to sit down with you guys and say, here, let's work out a plan if that does come. What do we, I don't want to be, have anyone surprised and, you know, you just don't need bad situation happening there, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Vance, anything?
No questions, no good.
I too want to thank you for coming in this evening and you rightly pointed out there have been any number of newspaper articles and places in other towns recently where people were forced to move and create all kinds of problems and it sounds like you're trying to be sensitive, hopefully that situation won't occur.
Absolutely.
But we would expect you to do all you can to.
Definitely.
To assist in that regard.
We had that situation happen here four or five years ago, apartments right across the street.
That's right.
Gave them sixty days, some people, some people have been there thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years.
Yeah.
And that was poorly handled and that's putting it mild.
Yeah.
Right here, right, and right across the street.
And there's no reason for it either, you know? I mean, it's, in my opinion, it's just ultimately greed on the, the minds of the developer and, again, we're in the affordable housing business, so we'd like to stay there as long as possible.
Okay, well, counsel, if you have no other questions, thank you again, sir, for taking the time to come in.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, okay. Was anyone else who cared to speak on this matter at all? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Counsel, if you're ready to vote, I'm gonna ask for a, a motion that was originally presented. Did you have anything else based on this one? Okay.
I have a question from Mr. Bowie, real briefly. So this is sort of a unique situation to where we're annexing an existing neighborhood or community, I guess this is for planning in general. And so what is the process by which we, we do that in the sense that it's not like we're annexing a development and they're building houses and people are slowly moving in, we are bringing people actively into the town. And so I guess my question is, are we coordinating with the police department to make sure that they have the capacity and they can take on the added workload that comes, there are other, there are other parks around Garner? And so I want to make sure we have a process for these sort of wholesale annexation of individuals into the, into the town and so did we treat this one just like a normal annexation? Is that kind of how we handled this?
I think, well, according to some of the information that I presented last time, I think those questions were vetted with the police and they didn't have any issue with it because it was a area that didn't really present a lot of crime, so the police department was, was fine with it. So I think those questions have been vetted already and according to the information that I have and presented last time.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this matter? All right. Already asked for any public comments, so there are none there. Okay, what say you, counsel?
Mayor, move, go ahead.
Mayor, move, we approve ordinance two oh two three five one nine six.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Unless there are any other questions, I'll call for a vote. So if you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, no. Okay, and it unanimously passes and it is so ordered. Mr. Bowie, let's see, are you still up on this next matter? Annexation petition two-three oh three Gatsby Station?
Yes, sir. This presentation is for annexation application twenty-three oh three Gatsby Station. On, the property is owned by Donald and Deborah Bailey, Patrick Roberts, and Donald Burgess. It is a satellite annexation, property is located, located off Rock Quarry Road and it contains pin number one seven four zero zero five eight six seven three and a portion of one seven four zero one six five two eight zero. It is approximately sixty point nine three acres in size. The recommendation is to adopt annexation ordinance, hold the public hearing first and then delay vote on annexation to after rezoning action on Gatsby, Gatsby Station CZMP dash twenty-two oh eight under old business. And here we have an aerial site, aerial photo of the site. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, counsel, everybody's.
You popped that back up the mountain.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted you to pop that mountain back up. No, thank you.
Is that what you wanted to see, Mr. Matthews? Okay. Questions for Mr. Bowie? Any? Okay, down here, no, okay. It's understood, I believe, that we will not vote on this matter, but next go to the, to the item under old business, which is the first item there in regards to.
Mr. Mayor, could you call for the public comment?
Yeah, you're right.
Because this is a public hearing?
Exactly. Okay, thank you, thank you for that reminder, yeah. So if you're here and wish to speak on this particular issue, would you let it be known at this time? We'll recognize you. Okay, seeing and hearing none, thank you very much. Okay. I believe, Ms. Jones, are we ready to move now to the, to the other item? So let's see, I mean, is Ms. Harris presenting on this? Okay, I'll recognize you at this time. We'll come back to this matter. Welcome.
Good evening. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am presenting the tier-two conditional rezoning quest for CZMP twenty-two oh eight Gatsby Station. This project previously came for you, to you for public hearing and was referred to the planning commission, so it is back for final action tonight. The applicant is Brandy Vega of Withers Rabinell and the owners, as Reggie mentioned, are Deborah Bailey, Patrick Gordon Roberts, Donald Lee Bailey, and Donald Lee Burgess. The request is to rezone sixty point nine two five acres from Wake County Residential to multifamily one conditional, which will be adopted as multifamily A conditional under the new zoning districts for a development not to exceed two point eight dwelling units per acre and there are zoning conditions that restrict the range of uses to townhomes and residential cluster only. There are architectural and other conditions proposed as well. As a reminder, this is the site location, it is adjacent to the Edge of Auburn Development. Just south of the project are two Wake County subdivisions, Stony Creek and the Hylee subdivision. The main access point would be off of Rock Quarry Road and it is not far from the future five forty alignment. The adjacent zoning to the north is R four, as I mentioned, that is the residential development of Edge of Auburn, which is roughly eight hundred residential units. And then to the south is the Wake County Single Family Residential. Just west across the street is undeveloped or single family and that is owned rural agricultural. You have seen the zoning conditions already, so I'm going to go briefly through these, but as I mentioned, the specific uses are committed to only residential cluster and townhouse and the maximum density will not exceed two point eight dwelling units an acre. The one condition I did want to draw your attention to is something that came up in the previous public hearing, which is the vinyl siding as a condition. The applicant has agreed to remove vinyl siding and has proposed condition A, that vinyl siding is not permitted, however vinyl windows and decorative elements and trims are. Everything else should be familiar to you from the previous presentation. These are all conditions that we've seen, the garage doors will have windows, buildings will incorporate variations in garage doors, there'll be no more than two units in a row with the same combination of garage door color panel and window pattern, residential foundations will have exposed height of at least twelve inches with masonry product and, and the rear, they will be textured with parjing and painted. They have conditions for an outdoor patio or deck on both the single family and the townhouse units and variation in pitch and plane for both the roof lines of the single family and the townhomes as well. Again, some more architectural conditions, including horizontal offsets on the front and roof facade and at least a window on the first floor of the front facade or a front door with. Um, again, some more architectural conditions, uh, including horizontal offsets on the front and roof facade, um, and at least a window on the first floor of front facade, or a front door with a transom window and a side light, uh, front door of all residential dwelling units will not be recessed more than four feet from the primary facade, and all dwelling units will have a covered front porch or stoop. There also will be windows on both sides per habitable floor, set in trim, and um, cantilever projections along the front facade, and all residential units will have cosmetic bra- brackets or shelf supports, any trash or recycling receptacles would be screened from public view. Um, they are proposing a six-foot wide private nature trail that will be provided throughout the community, and they are also proposing a greenway easement for future greenway connections. Um, so, as I said, the project area is approximately sixty point nine two five acres, and in the MF one district generally, um, the lot maximum area is six thousand square feet of development for the first unit, and an additional four thousand five hundred square feet of development for each additional unit, the MF one single-family detached cluster, cluster residential development is limited to six dwelling units an acre, um, and they have a hundred and sixty-seven units proposed total, eighty, uh, single family and eighty-seven townhouse, so they are well below that limit. Um, for their setbacks, the minimum lot width is eighteen feet, the front setback is fifteen feet for the townhomes, um, if the garage is in the front, it is a twenty-five foot setback, from the side, it's a fifteen foot setback, and from the rear, a twenty-five foot setback, and the building separation is thirty feet, or the triangulation method, for a single-family detached, the minimum lot width is fifty feet, uh, the front setback is twenty feet, side setback of seven point five feet, however, there is a provision in the ordinance to allow for a reduction to five feet, if the building is shown on preliminary subdivision plot. Uh, the rear setback is fifteen, the corner side is also fifteen, but there is that same provision for a reduction if the building is shown on the subdivision plot. Um, so here is the current master plan, there are some updates since you have last seen this, um, the applicant responded to some of the topics that were brought up during public hearing, and so I would like to draw your attention there. As you can see, this central um, connection to the trail has been moved to the middle of the um, of the site here, there was a lot located here, and they have relocated that to allow for a central connection. Additionally, there was a question about the perimeter buffers, um, so the thirty-foot buffer would only apply to the residential cluster, and then around the townhouse units, there would be a thirty-five foot perimeter buffer. Um, they have proposed a fifty-foot easement rather than a thirty-foot easement for the future greenway potential here. Um, and then, they have also proposed um, a thirty-foot easement with access and installation for the greenway here. And then, the um, only other item that was discussed at public hearing was the open space here, um, but I have an additional slide to show you about that. So this plan was determined to be consistent with the future land use map, which designates the site as a medium-density residential, that would include single-family duplex, triplex, quadplex, and townhome styled residences, with no less than two and a half, or more, and no more than five units per acre, so this project fits right in there, um, with about two point seven units per acre, it's consistent in both use and density. The transportation plan calls for sidewalks along Rock Quarry war, road as a pedestrian recommendation, the project will also install curb gutter and sidewalks and required widening of Rock Quarry Road along the frontage, and with these improvements, the projects are going to be considered consistent. And the site is not designated as a parkland search area, in addition, there is no proposed greenway corridor, however, this project is including some greenway easements and a greenway connection to the north um, Edge of Auburn Development, and so this rezoning can be considered consistent. So the planning commission heard the um, project at their last meeting last month, on March thirteenth, and they discussed um, several items, including the open space, the S C M's, um, the proposed road improvements off Rock Quarry Road, tree preservation, amenity spaces, neighborhood engagement, and if they were willing to impose any speed reductions, as well as asking about the proposed density and how it compares to Edge of Auburn. Um, and the planning commission has voted that it is consistent and has recommended it to you for adoption, um, so that is your charge here tonight, for um, a statement of reasonableness and to take final action, and so um, the final consistency statement, this request to rezone approximately six point nine two five acres from Wake County Residential R thirty to Town of Garner multifamily one, MF one C two sixty-four conditional, for the development of a residential community, it's consistent with the Town of Garner's adopted plans, including the future land use maps designation of medium-density residential regarding both proposed density and land use. In addition to findings of planned consistency, staff would note the following in support of a motion to approve, the plan is consistent with the density and product types established in the adjacent Edge of Auburn subdivision. So one possible discussion item that was brought up, um, between staff and council and the applicant, is that there was a question of whether these lots should be shifted to this side of the open space, um, essentially making a switch here, um, that is something that is possible item for discussion, um, but other than that, the applicant has um, adjusted their plan to speak to public hearing comments. And so, if you refer to the worksheet on page seventy-seven of your packet, um, for the motion to approve or deny. And the applicant is here and they have prepared a few slides.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harris, let me see if counsel has any questions for you, so uh, um, m- Mr. Matthews, I'll start with you, sir.
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Singleton.
Ms. Harris, they're going to address this, what you just showed us at the end, these lots, and there's lots, okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringer. Mr. Dellinger. Okay, Mr. Vance?
No questions at this time.
Okay, and I don't have any questions, so um, is the applicant here who wishes to speak on this matter, I suppose?
Yes.
Okay, I'll recognize you at this time. If you will introduce yourself and address.
Thank you, good even, sorry, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Brad Hart, I'm with Withers Ravenel Incorporated, one fifteen McKenan Drive, Cary, North Carolina, also here with us, excuse me, on the project team this evening, are Brandy Vega, Planning Director for Withers Ravenel, and Todd Alsop, Jennifer Scott with the developer, and Brittany Chase with Exalt Engineering, a transportation consultant. So what we've done is, is we've prepared several slides, and I'll try to be brief and not too redundant on things we've spoken about before, but if we could flip right through them, the, the main focus being to just highlight some of the key aspects of Gatsby Station and its consistency with the Garner Forward Plan, and it, and also consistency with the draft clue plan. So this first slide is the future land use map, from the Garner Forward Plan towards the upper right, in the northeastern corner of the town, uh, where you see the yellow star, that's Gatsby Station, located in area designated for residential neighborhoods. So regarding the draft clue plan, um, regarding land use, just again, recapping, we're a mixture of uh, single family and townhomes, directly to, regarding future land use, directly adjacent to the site, to the west, across Rock Quarry Road, it's designated as mixed-use um, activity center, and to the east, is designated for residential subdivisions and open space. Um, from a transportation standpoint, uh, we've got frontage on Rock Quarry Road, we'll be improving that to one-half of its ultimate thoroughfare section, uh, four-lane median divided, consistent with what's being done at Edge of Auburn. Pedestrian connectivity, so Gatsby Station's got excellent pedestrian connectivity, sidewalks on both sides of the street, an extensive network of paved trails, interconnecting all of the development pods, um, and the, as well as the passive and active recreation areas, uh, a- as well as two future uh, greenway stub connections. Gatsby Station has a variety of uh, home choices for residents, the townhomes are all rear-loaded, some have street frontage, some have courtyard frontage, and then of course, more traditional detached, single family, um, the project's been designed, you know, to include um, several pocket parks, dog park, and, and have those centrally located to the various development pods and interconnected uh, to each other, as well as the passive open space areas. The natural environment is a big part of Gatsby Station, um, there's a lot of natural areas, stream buffers, and those have been incorporated nicely, um, along with the developed and passive recreation areas and connect, interconnected throughout the community. Um, within the draft clue plan, so Gatsby Station would be a level-two development intensity project, meaning there's at least two separate land uses, uh, the buildings would be one to three stories in height, with, you know, pedestrian bicycle and automotive transportation modes utilizing typical suburban street cross-sections. Also in the clue plan, there are several if, uh, priority infrastructure investment areas identified, and Gatsby Station is located within a tier-two priority infrastructure, infrastructure investment area, specifically two R for residential infill, with the focus on that being to encourage um, infrastructure investment and development in areas that already have ex, access to existing water and sewer facilities, and within, you know, police and fire protection radius, and, and Gatsby Station is, is located well with respect to all that. And notably directly across the street from a tier-one priority infrastructure investment area, which would be the future mixed-use activity center, um, along Rock Quarry Road, adjacent to where five forty's going to come through. Okay, regarding land use and community character, um, quality of development is big, we've got commitments, zoning conditions and architectural commitments, um, about the architecture, the building materials, and obviously, you know, trees, green spaces, and landscaping is a big part of the project, diversity and sense of community, uh, we've got a mixture of, of housing types, um, for people of all ages and backgrounds to all come together. Supporting local business is also a, a goal in the clue plan, and we feel that Gatsby Station would, uh, will go a long way towards that, because it's, you know, positioned um, directly across the street from a future mixed-use activity center, um, you know, that'll have commercial components, and also near the future five forty corridor and interchange with Rock Quarry, so we think Gatsby Station is well-located to support local businesses for years to come. Scale of the project is, you know, human scale, walkable, one-to-three story buildings, uh, sidewalks on both sides, lots and lots of trails, safety, um, visibility is also mentioned in the clue plan, sightlines is what we take away, so if you look at the master plan, you know, the, the layout of the lots, the streets, the sidewalks, the, the parks, all have clean sightlines and visibility, and, you know, there's safety and visibility. The natural environment, like I said, is a big part of Gatsby Station, and, you know, overall, the project has about fifty-three percent open space, and that's a mixture of, you know, natural open space, developed open space, active and passive, and it, we feel like we blended all of that together, um, to really complement the character of the neighborhood. Now, let's see, okay, elevating the public realm, that, that's a phrase that shows up a couple of times, or a few times, in the draft clue plan, and we believe that Gatsby Station elevates the public realm by using the public spaces, parks, gathering areas as an organizing element of the community, um, that helps connect the people and the residents to each other and to the environment, and there's lots of beautiful, various types of open space at Gatsby Station. Now, the next couple of slides, as we wrap up, are illustrative examples of the anticipated residential housing types, um, I would want to point out to you that the finer, final builder for the community has not yet been selected, so the exact building plans may vary, however, these renderings are illustrative of what we envision for the neighborhood, and they are consistent with, you know, the width, the size, um, the scale, and of, of the master plan and the way it's been designed, each of the lots and the townhome buildings, um, as well as they're consistent with the architectural commitments that are in the zoning conditions. And the next slide, same comments hold true, but for the single family, so again, just a couple of different examples of the type of single-family detached that we envision being in the neighborhood. And the last slide, we'll just circle back to the overall master plan itself, and with that, we'll wrap up and make ourselves available for any follow-up questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Hart.
Thank you.
I'll begin with Mr. Singleton, uh, for the questions, if he has any.
Right this minute, no.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Behringer. Okay, Mr. Matthews.
Uh, it's a good presentation, I like your layout, using all the open spaces, you're not just cramming things in, you're looking long-range, and uh, with a good variety of buildings and your renderings, I like what you're presenting here, and uh, plus being in close proximity to the, that new loop coming in there, and Rock Quarry Road, that'll be a tremendous help on, on traffic, and uh,
Absolutely.
And with potential retail right across the road, that'll put that element in there, so, so, looks very well balanced to me.
It's great here, thank you.
Okay, uh, how about Mr. Vance, anything?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Hart, in reference to the geotechnical analysis for the, for the property, I know there was some, some concerns from, from the workshop where residents were asking, okay, will there be blasting there, uh, do you foresee any type of blasting happening based upon the geotechnical report?
We, we do not anticipate any blasting, we cannot guarantee that there wouldn't be, but a geotechnical evaluation was done for the site, and um, sometimes in the eastern part of the county, you do find areas that have rock, um, throughout this site, rock was really, it, rock that needs to be blasted was not encountered within the depth ranges of the grading activity that's anticipated for the site, so that's no guarantee, sometimes you can get out there during construction in an area of a larger cut, or deep utility trench, and could be in an area that was just in between, where the boreings were tested, but we do not anticipate um, blasting.
Okay, do not anticipate, but if there is?
That's right, the potential, it's potential that there could be, there always is.
Yeah, but, but if there is a need to, to blast, is there notification of the residents about, there'll be blasting happening at a particular time?
Right, well, I, uh, to be honest with you, I'm not completely sure about the notification require, I mean, obviously, there wouldn't be any residents on this property, but I guess if you're assuming about the surrounding area, um, it, it does require a permit, and there's notification that goes through to very, you know, emergency response locations, uh, or agencies, but to be honest with you, I'm not completely familiar with that full process. It's usually driven by the, the contractor that's doing the, the blasting.
Uh, Mr. Dellinger.
One quick question for staff, what's the timeline for that section of five forty? Because it's not in the pre, it's not in the recent one, it's not in the, it's not in the leg that's being done now, but it's probably five years out or something, okay.
I, I could be wrong, but I believe that that section, okay.
Brittany may know more than I.
Brittany Chase.
Anybody who knows.
It's in the, in the next, the next few to several years.
Okay.
Sorry, do you know Brittany's?
Sort of, um, I'm Brittany Chase with Exalt Engineering, three oh four West Melbrook Road in Raleigh, um, at the time that we performed the traffic study, it listed a construction year of twenty twenty-seven, um, that's just beginning, the construction year, so.
And so when this is done, in Edge of Auburn, there'll be a four-lane segment that's continuous all the way through, except for the. all the way through, except for there seems to be one gap of a house somewhere in here. So I guess we need to, we'll figure that out. But I just want to know the timeline on that. Thanks for the presentation. I have just a couple of questions. It's a great layout. It's a very challenging site with the buffers, and so you've done a really good job with that. I have questions about this road at the top that looks just out of place, like terminally out of place.
Yeah.
And it seems as though you, in theory, there could be a configuration where you move this stormwater up further and then bring some of those lots down and lose fewer lots and then preserve even more. What's the rationale for that road?
Yeah, I'm assuming you're talking about the long road with a slight curve in it that runs east-west. So, and if I'm not mistaken, I think we talked about that one a little bit at the public hearing as well. But just to recap why it looks like that, where the bulb on the western end of that road is, is accepting the road stub coming into the project from Edge of Auburn. Normally, a road stub in an adjacent property would be positioned in a location where you could generally extend it or maybe put a little bit of curve in it. But that particular road stub is in a place where we couldn't extend it straight through the site because it's right at the confluence where two streams and riparian buffers come together. So from an environmental impact standpoint, when it's otherwise not technically has to be made, we worked through that with staff early in the design, and so to put that bulb on it and essentially a right-hand turn, we have to connect to it. We absolutely have to connect to that stub. But since we can't go straight across the stream, and we only need one stream crossing from a permitting standpoint to access that portion of the site and get to the stub, the best location for it was the place that we, where we show it now. And if we were to move that stream crossing further, more midway along that run, then we would get into a situation where the cul-de-sac at the northeastern corner would exceed the maximum allowable length for a cul-de-sac. And then there's a few other considerations about the location. So we commiserated over it a bit, and it agreed. It's very awkward, but it's really the best solution for the constraints that we have, or at least we're convinced that it is.
It just appears to be a substantive hardship for you.
It is, and so not only that, but it's got a sidewalk on the left, a sidewalk on the right, and a trail right next to it that don't have any lots along them. So, yeah, it, yeah.
And I think for, you have 160-some units, you've got your two entrances over here, so it seems like the poor placement of that stub has inflicted a real strong burden on your project.
Yeah, it definitely, no, it definitely, we would have preferred to have a cleaner stub location from the adjacent project, but sometimes, you know, that you just, you deal with the cards you're dealt, play with the cards you're dealt.
I have another question, but I'll pass on to Mr. Singleton.
Okay, let me go back to Mr. Singleton. He didn't have anything before, wanted to see if he has anything.
Listen, I think Mr. Hart answered. I thought that had, I think we discussed at the public hearing, that straight section has sidewalks on both sides, and the trail is adjacent to it.
Yes, sir. Correct.
Thank you.
Anything?
I have just a bunch of other questions just on that. What was your rationale for not trying to get an exemption from that connection?
Um, I think, true, yeah. So maximum cul-de-sac length, so to even access the northern portion of the site, you know, where we do have the lots up there, the length of that cul-de-sac would be measured from its, the next intersection back in the other pod, and it would be far in excess of what will be allowed, so. But to be honest, we did not actively try to pursue just not connecting it or writing off that whole piece of the project as a whole.
That's unfortunate hardship for your project.
Well, we've just rolled it into everything, and we've moved on. So we're, you know, we wouldn't have preferred it upfront, but we're good with it now. It's part of the plan.
Anything else, Mr. Vance?
For the questions, no.
Okay. Counsel, you finish with this witness. Everybody good here? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Were we going to hear from you, or only if there are questions?
I'm going to.
Okay. Anybody have questions for this young lady? I believe none. All right. Anybody else here from the applicant that is going to testify? No? Okay, only if you want to hear from someone, right? Okay. All right. Is there persons here from the public who wish to speak on this matter? Okay, don't see any. Ms. Harris, anything else from you? We covered everything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, counsel, as I understand, we would take the vote on this matter, the rezoning, and then we would hold the vote on the annexation vote. Is that right, Ms. Jones? Okay. So I believe we are ready for a motion at this time, unless I'm missing something from anybody. So what say you, counsel, on the rezoning? Does the MP 2208?
I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 6 of the staff report as our own, and I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2023-5193 approving rezoning of CZMP 2208 as requested, as requests, as the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely allow, encourage shared use and mixed-use developments.
Okay, Mr. Vance, thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, properly seconded by Ms. Behringer. All right, thank you. Counsel, motion is properly before you, if there's any other quick discussion you want to have before we vote. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it's a great project. It's one of the most competent ones to come that I've seen. It's exceptional. I'm going to vote no on the project, but the reason is the inflexibility that is sort of manifesting itself on the northern side of this property. I know you've tried to work, you've done your part, and you've worked with it, but I think as a town, we can be a little more flexible and not put the burden of building road that is not really serving a purpose, and also a road that we'll have to end up maintaining. But other than that, I think it's a good project.
Okay. Counsel, you ready to vote? Any other comments? Hearing none. If you approve the motion that is before you this time, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And if you're opposed, no?
No.
Okay, it's noted that the, this motion passes on a vote of four to one, and it is so ordered. And again, I want to thank those of you involved with this and your good presentation here. We wish you well with this, okay? Thank you. Where did Mr. Hart go? Is he still here? Oh, there he is, okay, yeah. Good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe it would now be in order for us to go back and vote on the annexation motion at this time. Is that right, Ms. Jones? Counsel, unless you have questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion on the annexation portion of this.
Just may I move we adopt ordinance 2023-5197, annexation of Gatsby Station.
Your second.
Okay.
Okay, motion properly made, Mr. Matthews, and seconded by Mr. Vance. Unless there are other questions, I'll ask for a vote. If you favor this motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, vote no. And it's so ordered with a unanimous vote. Thank you all for your time, and thank all of you who were here for this. Appreciate your time on this. Hopefully, it'll be a good project.
I must say, I didn't vote no, I didn't vote yes, didn't say anything. But Mr. Dellinger's point is well-taken. We've got a road up there we've got to maintain, but we're already meeting the two entrances. If they didn't connect to the stub, then they could realign their cul-de-sac, and it might have all fallen into place, so, anyway.
Okay.
I agree. It's a good, looks to be, this has been stated, a good compliment project, a lot better than some that could roll through here, I'll tell you that.
Thank you. Yes, okay. Okay, let me see where I am here. Did this man here, I believe we are down to item two under new and old business, is that right? We're going to hear from Ms. Stewart, is that right?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I am Jekyll Standard, the Stormwater Program Administrator. I'm here to bring back to you ZTA, the zoning text amendment 2301 Stormwater Program for Nitrogen Control, for final decision tonight.
Okay.
So you heard this on February 21st. It went to the Planning Commission on March 13th, so tonight it's back for final decision for an implementation date of May 1st. Again, the area stems all of Garner, ETJ, and town limits. Just as a refresher, this is the new nutrient management study that was adopted in 1997 with the 30% nitrogen loading goal. The town of Garner was originally a part of the 15 local governments that had to implement those rules, and those rules have been reviewed and adopted, updated by the state in 2020. So we are here tonight essentially updating our program rules as well to be in line with the state's rules. So I'll just go through some of those changes that we've already discussed. So now we have post-construction requirements that are clearly defined. The new rules explicitly define disturbance thresholds, which we already had in our old program book. There's an updated calculation method with the use of the newly released state SNAP tool rather than our old calculation forms. The removal of retrofit requirements from the old rules. A built-upon-area threshold that is anything greater than 24% will require a stormwater control measure. And then if it's in the water supply watershed protection area, it's actually going to be 12% because the stringent rules, the watershed water supply rules supersede the nitrogen rules. There's a one-year peak flow match requirement from the old rules that's been removed from the new rules, but the town will still be requiring that for development because we require the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events, and sometimes the 100-year, depending on the area of town. This program will ensure maintenance of permitted stormwater control measures and compliance with the rule for life of the development. And then also, Terry and I worked together to add an enforcement section to ensure compliance of these stormwater devices. There were just two small changes that were made since you saw this the last time. I removed the redundant item G, which was similar to B, from the draft ordinance, and then a word was corrected from the enforcement section from natural to nature. So the planning commission voted five to one to adopt the following consistency statement and recommend it to town council for approval. The request to amend the UDO reflects changes required by the state statute, therefore, this request may be found consistent with the adopted land use plan. The dissenting vote for the planning commission was specifically for the 6.7, I'm sorry, 7.6.3 penalties for violation Section B. That states violation or failure to comply with any of the provisions or requirements of Section 11.2 shall subject the offender to a civil penalty of $100 per violation. If the offender fails to pay the civil penalty within 10 days after being issued the civil penalty, the penalty may be recovered by the town in a civil action in the nature of the debt. The planning commission member did not like that there was only 10 days that they had to pay the civil penalty. They argued that there's a lot of post office delays, and they wanted that timeline to be extended. However, 10 days is also the days listed for the nuisance ordinance, so if we're going to come at somebody from a couple of different enforcement mechanisms, we want that to be consistent rather than having a couple of different timelines. So keeping the 10 days is consistent with the nuisance ordinance and therefore with the UDO too. And I don't know if Terry wants to say anything about that. We kind of had a discussion about it because it's such a long procedure before they even get to these violations, and I think a lot of the other planning commission members agreed that they had ample time to fix their problem before it even got to this stage. So at this stage, if they're issuing, if they get issued a civil penalty for not complying, it will have been probably four months of a process beforehand. So it shouldn't be a surprise or anything that's shocking to them to get a civil penalty after this period of time has gone by. So tonight, the recommendation, there's a reasonableness. In addition to approving the statement regarding planning consistency upon the advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. The staff recommendation, the staff has no objection to the proposal and recommends town council approval of the planning commission's statement of consistency presented in Section 4 of the attached report. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if we have questions from a standard, anything, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
Chair, same with him.
I want to thank you all for adding the enforcement section here. I think all of this came from the incident issue we had behind the Lowe's shopping center. And so it is in place, clearly stated that whoever the owner of the property is has to maintain those stormwater control measures. They've got to keep those maintained to operating standard as was initially approved as long as they own it.
Yeah, and that, and so any part of that large document that we have, as well as this ordinance, is basically anything that they're doing, so all of that maintenance that's outlined in that big document. If they're going against any of that, we can use that enforcement language to get them to comply.
And if this is updated, as we vote on this tonight, I'm assuming it's going to get approved, that's retroactive on anything. It doesn't matter when it got approved or when the stormwater control measures were put in place, it's, they've got to keep it up to the standards that are listed.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
And thank you for going through all this. As I mentioned last time, this is a lot of technical stuff that people like us who are not stormwater engineers read it and go, "Good golly." I mean, I appreciate you because you have to buy up all these rules and regulations from the state and federal guidelines, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Behringer. Mr. Dellinger. Mr. Vance?
I echo Councilman Singleton. There's a lot of work that was done. Good job.
Okay, I believe that's all the questions. Counsel, you ready to vote on this matter? Takes a minute requirement, so a motion is in order at this time.
I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 4 of the staff report as our own. I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2023-5194 approving rezoning ZTA 2301 as requested, as request is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely reflect a significant change in conditions or support of public policy established by the town since the adoption of applicable land use plans.
Okay.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any other concern or questions? Hearing none. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And there is no opposition, so the matter carries, and it is so ordered. Thank you so much, staff, for all your participation. Thank you, Ms. Standard. All right, we have finished our regular agenda, I believe, and so I believe we have enough time to keep moving on. Let's go to committee reports, if there are any.
No report from HR tonight.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, anybody else? Okay, none. Mr. Manager, we'll hear from you, sir.
Alright, Mayor. Town Council have just a handful of um, things to share. I'mma, I'mma ask Mr. Trezenberg to hang around for just a minute though, if you, if you can. I'll go to another item while he's doing that. We were gonna um, roll out the planning interactive map, so I was gonna get him to show you that online. But while he's doing that, we'll go um, are you ready now Jeff, or you want me to go to next? Okay, yeah, if you could just maybe give the council a, a look of the um, interactive map, on the planning interactive map that just
Sure.
came out that will allow the public to um, kinda get an idea of the development and some of the designs and timelines and those type of things.
I admittedly haven't played with it much myself.
Okay, so I'm kinda putting you on the spot.
But that's okay.
Yeah.
Brian and I did a lot of uh, talking back and forth as he was developing it. But yeah, Mr. Godfrey, who's our new um, GIS specialist, um, he was promoted to that position from planning technician. This is, he's been working on a couple of uh, different web applications. He's deployed one for the police department for their internal use. Just to help them with jurisdictional kinds of questions and their police beats and things like that. And then also this development um, map application. So like most um, other communities around us, you can click on it and it will take you directly to a hosted service. Most of us in the area use the same uh, company, which is Esri. And so for the most part though, they'll have some, each one is customized, but they do have the same basic lookout and functionality. So we just have tried to highlight again which projects are in review versus those that have been recently approved. We've also added some uh, reference information such as the town limits and the ETJ. What you can do is by using this little information tool, um, I'll tell you about the map. But then you can also come here and click on any particular project. And what you can see here is it'll give you some basic information that um, pulls from a database that um, he has assembled largely from some other, like our Excel spreadsheet and the pending and a few other things, but we have to keep it in a, in the GIS format um, for this app to work. But it'll give you right now a project link for more information. In working with the IT department, the best way we can do this right now is to link directly to an externally shared folder. Eventually what we hope to do is to be able to link each project to each project folder. But for right now, what we've done is we have alphabetized them by project name. So when you are looking at your information, if you see George's Landing as the name, when you go to that folder, you can just scroll down to the G area and George's Landing shows up there. And you can click on the folder and that will take you to um, in this case, the approved set of plans. And that's an older one. But for a project that's a, has been currently in review, um, here's Mahler's Creek, which is a project that's currently on hold. But again, you can come over, scroll down to the M's, Mahler's Creek, and see the latest submittal there and just pop open the PDF. Of course, we're on hand to um, answer questions about any project um, that folks would have. But as projects come in, um, we will continue to update this as projects fall off and get completed, we'll remove them as well.
Alright, any questions about that? I know this is one of the things that we had talked to the council and promised that we would have at some point. And we wanna thank Brian for all this hard work in getting this together, so. Just another, another layer of information for the public.
And so this has replaced the static map that was on the planning homepage previously. We still have it, um, so if there's any value for that, we'll be glad to put it back up. But we just felt like this would be the current, latest, greatest.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate that, okay.
Alright, I'mma call up Leah and um, I think she's gonna cover the uh, capital projects update.
You guys are gonna get your fill of capital updates tonight, I think. So a couple things first off. You'll notice that your update sheets that I left you at your stations look a little different than they have in the past. I am certainly open to feedback if there are things that you all would like to see that you don't see or the, a form, a different format that works better for you. We're working on kind of reformatting some of our reporting tools rather than just using the same printed spreadsheet so that it's in a little friendlier format to read through. And also sort of feeds into some other places for us to maintain information as well.
I can tell you, I think I already like the slightly larger print anywhere.
Okay. Yeah, especially as we get more and more projects, it was, it was getting hard to get it all on the one spreadsheet without, I feel like I needed a ruler to kinda follow the lines across and match everything up, so. Plus there was probably a lot more information in there than most of you really need on a day-to-day. So we're trying to highlight the important things and of course, could always answer questions about any details you would like to have. As one more item of housekeeping, I wanted to briefly introduce Lisa Rodriguez. I told her she didn't have to speak or anything, but just so you can meet her. She is our senior engineering um, project manager. She's been with us almost six months now, which seems crazy um, that it's been that long already, but it has been a fast and busy six months for all of us. So we are very happy to have her. She comes with project management experience from the town of Cary and from the city of Peoria, Arizona. And she is working a lot with me on a lot of this process improvement and development of the um, capital project um, processes with budget and with Mari and, and all of those kind of big picture things that we're working on, so we're, we're glad to have her for sure. Alright, so just going through some updates tonight. You heard a lot about updates on the financial side, so we just wanna give you an update on where things are and milestones that we're hitting in some of the projects that we're working on right now. First to start with street and sidewalk projects. All of our favorite, Vandoor Springs. We are so close. So if you've driven through there recently, it pretty much looks done. It is pretty much done. It's um, we've done a walkthrough with DOT as well as the town's walkthrough. The contractor is currently just completing up some punch list items, you know, dressing in the, in the right-of-way off-road and, and things like that. But the work is substantially complete. So we are ready to check that one off and move to the next. Lake Drive improvements is right about in the same place. Their walkthrough will be happening probably next week or so, um, and they'll just have punch list items from there. The paving on that is done, curb and gutter is in place. It is substantially complete at this point as well. We have the White Oak Roundabout, which um, I think we already noted once tonight, has taken a little longer than we all sort of hoped or anticipated. And a, and a couple of items there, I think we have learned that sometimes utility coordination takes a lot longer than you want it to. Unfortunately, we're kind of at the mercy of some of these companies and them relocating for us. And also some of the um, Land and Easement acquisition. We did have a reimbursement claim for right-of-way approved, so we do have some funding on its way to the town from the LAP program for that, which is great. And we are waiting for DOT's review of our final construction documents. So that one is fully designed, we're just buttoning up all the pre-construction pieces to be able to get it out to bid.
Leah, I'd like to add that and that uh, right-of-way is an issue on many projects, not just on this one. So it's not unique to this, this project. It's an issue all over.
It is.
Also, utility relocations as well. Those two items can really hamstring a project for a while.
It can, yes, and um,
Of the information you showed, Ms. Harrison, that the estimated completion, that once you get approval, was the fall of '24. The fall of 2024?
Um, yes.
That's estimated, okay. Is this, this will take close to a year or how long is the projection?
Close, maybe nine months construction or so.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll probably be close to a year. So that's our estimate. Alright, so for Joan Sausage Road, um, the north section, we are currently still in design on that one. What we're really working on right now is the well and septic evaluations. Y'all probably remember conversation about that previously. It really came up at our first public meeting that a lot of the properties along that corridor have um, wells and septic systems and we were concerned about impacts, which is unfortunately something that the feasibility study did not really look into. So we've slowed down a little bit on the design because of that, because we, there's no point in us moving forward until we know the potential impacts that we have, so we're taking a look at those first. As was noted schedule-wise, we um, are looking to reapply for a LAP grant um, this year, which if we get that funding would come fall of next year, which would coincide pretty closely with when we'll probably be ready to go to construction anyway, which works well. The, just kind of a couple notes on the, the budget as well. I know we've, we've seen this one kinda creep up and up and I think there are kind of several major reasons. One, we have increased the scope of the project from when it was originally um, looked at in the feasibility study. And the biggest part of that is the work that's being done on Garner Road and at the intersection of Garner Road and Joan Sausage. And a lot of that was due to setting up that intersection for the future elevation of Joan Sausage over the railroad for the next phase. So to be able to do work up to Garner Road at this time and not have to come back later and remove what work we are doing, we have to go ahead and start raising that intersection now to be able to set us up for the next phase of the project, which also means widening portions of that intersection more than was originally considered. There also, we have, I think we've, we've made an effort to have much more reasonable estimates, cost estimates for what right-of-way and utility relocation might cost. This $20 million number you're looking at is our full budget amount, so that's not just construction. That includes the design, the utility relocation, the right-of-way, any, any costs that we see potentially associated with the project. So that's, that's another reason that you see some of the costs increase is because we are looking at having more comprehensive and more realistic cost estimates um, going into it.
I have a couple
Sure.
specific questions. The 10-foot path is on the west side, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay. Also, when we get to Garner Road, um, there are a couple of stubs, the sidewalks. One in the Ashland subdivision that does front on Garner Road and one at the White, White Oak Townhomes or whatever. Are we gonna, as we improve Garner Road there, are we gonna run and connect to those sidewalk? Are sidewalk connections there a part of the improvements?
Yes, they are.
On both sides?
Yes.
On the north side, yeah. North side of Garner Road, yes.
Yes, on the north side, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, those are, those are included. And the, the multi-use path, I think per the plan should come down the west side of Joan Sausage and then also go along the north side of, of Garner Road, which would eventually connect with the multi-use path that will be installed along the frontage of Garner Road at the park and any future development that, that comes that way.
Thank you.
I have a, a question.
Sure.
Are there any
I'll stay there.
renderings of, so you mentioned that the Garner Road, Joan Sausage elevate to future. Is there any renderings of what that's gonna look like? Because that bridge won't be there for a decade, so are there renderings of what that elevation's gonna look like? Even though it still goes straight across? I mean, that's gotta look really strange.
We probably have something. Let me see what I can get you that would be the easiest to look at. I know we have plans for it. It's, it's probably not as strange as you're imagining it. It's not a dramatic increase at the intersection. It's just kind of setting up the, the slope like you're just starting to get into it.
Anyway, so you're more leveling it. Because it already goes down, you're going, okay. Another question I sort of had was um, the, is there any cost savings in not having that wide of a median? I'm looking at the Amazon and part of that is a narrow area where there are turn lanes and I imagine there're gonna be turn lanes in some parts, portions of this. There's only a small portion in front of Amazon that sort of has that, well, it's not small. It's that middle portion that has the wider, I mean, maybe it doesn't save that much money to not go as wide on both sides, but you're saving some money doing something. I don't know if that's, it seems excessive for a, a mile of road where you go further up and it's not kind of green in the middle too. Or what, what's sort of the full length of the project gonna look like median-wise?
Right, so in this area, um, there will not be a lot of median cuts because you're approaching the intersection, so we don't want turn lanes in the median necessarily until you are at the intersection. The 17-foot median is standard.
Okay.
That's DOT's standard. That basically gives enough space that when you do have a turn lane, you have an ample turn lane width and then still a remaining monolithic median. That's an appropriate barrier between the turn lane and the, the traffic in the other direction. So I think that's, that's probably something we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room on.
There are two turn lanes on this section, like one at the school? Or, and I can't remember the whole layout, but there, are there two turns on this section? Two turn lanes?
Two left turns.
Going south, left into the school?
There are.
Okay, that's what I was trying to remember, how many there were. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Alright, and then moving downtown, we have the Rand Mill and Main Street Streetscape project, which is streetscape and parking lot. So this is the addition of a parking lot and intersection improvements. This is currently in design. This was one of the projects that we did receive an earmark grant for. So what we're doing right now is working on the NEPA documents and environmental assessments required for compliance with that grant. And then that one will keep moving toward construction. And Lisa will be um, attending the DGA meeting this week to be able to provide information about the updates to this design and answer any questions for that group as well. And right next door, we have the Pearl Street and Parker Street improvements. This is a sidewalk project that also includes on-street parking and widening of the roads. There is a portion of Pearl Street that will be done by the private development that is down there, so we are widening on the opposite side and then continue the widening down to the end of Pearl Street and also along Parker Street to connect back to Montague. And that is, we're reviewing the 65% design, so um, we are working on utility coordination and just continuing to progress that forward. Aversboro Road sidewalk, y'all are probably familiar, connecting the YMCA down to the existing sidewalk at Berryfield. And this is at 65% design as well. I will note in our budget documents, we have combined this with the Garner Road sidewalks, so this, the budget on these slides is, is for the two combined. That's how we're having them designed and will likely have them constructed as well is as a, as a package, similar work. And we have the Garner Road sidewalk similarly. Sidewalk along Garner Road from Vandoor West subdivision to Weston Road, filling in the gap there, and that one is at 65% design as well. Bryan Road improvements includes the sidewalk um, from Elkstone Trail to Ackerman Road. Notably, what we are working on right now is the addition of a section of Bryan Road, um, that basically will give us a continuous three-lane section through, throughout. So the project originally was widening Bryan Road to a three-lane section near the intersection from Ackerman to Elkstone. Then just south of there, there is already a three-lane section in place. So really we were gonna end up with three lanes tapering down to two lanes for a very short stint and then widening back out to three lanes. So we chose to instead include that gap in this project so that we can have the three-lane section throughout instead of the taper and rewidening. So that is what they are working on now, is including that design portion. Uh, moving to capital facility projects, we have the Town Hall Annex, which is the building at Forest Hills. We are working on the renovation of that. We are working on the renovation of that. Public Works recently cleaned out the space for us, and we just completed survey of the property for the future access road that will come from this building and parking lot over to that building to create the whole Town Hall campus site. And then Parks Projects, I know y'all have heard a lot about these recently probably, so we'll keep it brief. The White Deer Park improvements is just kicking off design. The South Garner Greenway is also kicking off design, starting, the survey has started and the environmental assessment. Jurgen Park, as you know, you just gave feedback for a couple items there, and they are moving forward on design. And the dam rehab, looking at the survey and site inventory from the consultant. And Stormwater Projects, we have the Junction Road, Junction Boulevard culvert lining. This contract is out for signature right now, so we'll likely have a notice to proceed as soon as next week to begin work on this. This includes lining of the culverts along Junction Road and installation of head walls at those existing culverts. And then the Stormwater Assessment, we just had the kickoff for this last week, and that is to do the inventory and assessment of all of our smaller pipes and infrastructure. We are also looking at areas of limited infrastructure. We recently obtained a grant from the LASSI program, which is through ARPA. It's a local assistance for stormwater infrastructure investment, I think is what all those letters are for. So we were awarded $400,000 from them to be able to help with some of this work. So we hope to use some of that to look at some of the older neighborhoods in the town that really have limited infrastructure and maybe what solutions we can come up with where they have drainage concerns as well. And then a few notable NC DOT updates. The Kerbram replacement project, I am told, is approximately 80% complete. The new Bethel Bridge is complete, that bridge is open. The US 401 widening, that's U 5302, the let date for that is currently January 24. And the NC 50 bridge at 70 is to be let in August of this year.
For real?
Well...
For real?
We hope for real.
Okay.
I, I know we have coordinated with DOT on the, on the bridge at 50 quite a bit because of the Lake Drive project, so I can at least vouch for activity happening on that one.
Refresh me, how far over are we? Was it about three years ago it was supposed to have been started?
That sounds right. Yeah, it seems like every time we look, it's pushed back a few more months and a few more months, so.
Let's hope, that would be good.
And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise that's all I have for today.
Questions for Leah, anybody?
The grant you got for the Stormwater, as you say, will that be to study some of the areas in the older neighborhoods and see what can be done? It won't really be to implement anything, it'll be to seek out where the problems are and try to come up with some solutions that may solve the problem?
Correct, yeah, it's specifically a planning grant, they call it, so for study-type activities. That grant program was limited to specific areas, so the program had actually mapped the kind of disadvantaged areas statewide, and a certain percentage, I think 70% of the grant money has to be used in those areas. That happens to coincide with like much of northern Garner, which is where we have a lot of our older neighborhoods that we need to take a look at anyway. So because we will have additional funding outside of what we were ready to commit to the assessment for the specific areas, I think that opens up a good opportunity for us to take a look at what we could potentially do. Right now, the Stormwater Bond is the one that I don't think we've completely maxed out on commitments yet, so hopefully we can use the information from this study to identify a couple high-priority Stormwater projects to be the next couple capital projects for us to complete.
Did you notice, Ms. Harrison, it didn't say North Garner, she said Northern Garner. That makes it sound so big and expansive.
I have a question, if I might ask. The, if you're headed on 70 West, you pass Fast Med, and before you get to the Highway 50 bridge, there is a turn lane, a right turn lane going into Fast Med, and then it, it's cut off and then it starts again after you pass the Women's Club property, and it's in front of the commercial project over there.
Okay.
Is there, I've been asked over and over again if that, if that turn lane can be continued as one continuous thing. People will be driving along and they don't know where to go to turn into the Women's Club, because if they're in the, the official right lane, then they may cut somebody off turning into Fast Med, trying to turn into the Women's Club. Is that a possibility, that that can be extended as one piece and not make that, or, or one lane and not make that so confusing?
Yeah, so it definitely would be an NC DOT call since it's their street, but we can, we can ask the question. I'm not sure why it would have been, if it was done that way intentionally to begin with, or sometimes it just is a matter of timing and when those things are put in. So we can certainly ask if there's opposition. I guess the next catch is whether they're willing to pay for it to happen or not, but...
I think it's really about four feet of paint, one line, it doesn't make a difference, thank you.
Just striped down, okay, yeah, we can ask about it.
Any other questions for Leah? Yeah, go ahead.
A question on the Stormwater, the assessment project and that ongoing activity. What sort of your professional best guess as to what you might find? And, one, how you would prioritize the problems you find, and then how much would it cost to fix a few major? I don't even know what a major Stormwater problem is, but what sort of, what are we talking about when you find something through this assessment?
Yeah, things with the way costs have been, major has a whole different meaning than it used to, I think, but... So we did a similar assessment, not exactly the same, but we did do an assessment in 2017, I believe, of the larger pipes in town. A lot of what we found there, which I would probably find, imagine to be similar for the smaller pipes as far as the condition assessment, are pipes that were just old and in disrepair. We didn't find that many areas where we had significant capacity issues, so I guess that's good in the sense that we do have options, like the, the Junction Boulevard, we have the option of just lining those pipes because they're, they're large enough, there's enough capacity, we don't have to replace them, they're just not in the best shape. So I think we'll have some instances like that. When you get into the smaller pipes, whether it's worth lining it or just replacing a pipe becomes more of a toss-up, but the areas where there's not a lot of infrastructure, that's where it gets a little bit trickier, because you also don't want to go blow up a whole neighborhood to reconstruct it, to put in all the infrastructure that we might put in today. So I think that's really where we're hoping that we can look for maybe some creative solutions to not bring it up necessarily to a standard that we would build new construction to, but to alleviate the, the main concerns. As far as cost-wise, it's hard to say what those would cost without, without knowing what they are yet, but I'm hoping that we can come out of this with kind of a prioritized list of things that we would like to do so that we have an idea of what we can use funding for now and then what we need to find a solution for, for funding in the future.
And visually, would you sort of map that, like they do the road conditions, or how, what sort of...
We will.
Okay.
Yeah, so in the 2017 assessment, and we'll do something similar here, although we're doing a little more work on the, the inventory and the GIS side, so hopefully we'll get even a better deliverable out of it. But we have those locations mapped and to say what the issue is, and sort of like, like you mentioned, the, the pavement, a heat map kind of style, so you know the things that, yeah, we should go fix them, but it's not urgent or the things we need to address right of way. And there'll probably be, I would say, a handful of things or a decent number of things that they find that might just be maintenance items that we can cover through Public Works as well, you know, within their capacity. I know they've got lots to do, but they do a lot of Stormwater maintenance already, so it might be something that fits into their program as well.
Any other questions for Ms. Harris? Okay, I'll be very brief. I couldn't help but say a couple of words of, I guess, nostalgia. As I saw that segment of Vandoor Springs Road when I first moved to Garner 35 years ago, I, I lived in the neighborhood of Tiffany Woods, and I can remember sometimes in the evening hours, my wife and I would like to take a quick stroll up the street there. There obviously wasn't a sidewalk there, and as traffic came by, we sort of took our lives into our own hands, I guess. And there was a fairly deep ditch there, I think she might have slipped into it one night, I'm not sure, but anyway, I'm not sure if she's forgiven me for that, but it's so good to see the sidewalk there now. And we need to go back over there and walk that segment just for nostalgia's sake, I guess. Enough of that, but thank you for your good report, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, that it?
Ms. Harrison, thank you for that. And the only other thing I had was just a reminder that Town Hall will be closed on Friday for a holiday, so we will not be here. And that's all of the...
There was a note tonight, Mr. Mercer sent us that Aversboro will be closed today and tomorrow, but I didn't see it closed today.
It was closed earlier today, when we got in, this morning. They had it blocked off, City of Raleigh's doing some utility work there, so maybe it wasn't...
Two days, but wasn't maybe one as significant as I thought.
Yeah, hopefully.
We weren't able to confirm tonight whether they finished completely or just finished for the day, but it was this afternoon when they moved away. So if we find, if we get an update, we'll work on changing the message that is on the website.
Thanks.
Okay, was that it, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
You have anything, Ms. Jones?
No, not tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go with council reports, start with Mr. Vance, I guess.
Excuse me. Do we have an update on the Jackie Johns Park improvements, repairs?
We do, we do have a contract with our contractor, and I believe they're supposed to start that work within the next couple weeks, once it gets scheduled. It took us a little bit longer to find a contractor who could do the work, and we've now have been able to do that, and they're under contract, so I would hope in the next few weeks.
At least in the next couple of weeks, okay.
Yeah, and I'll confirm that with Public Works, if there's any changes, I'll make sure council's aware of that.
Thank you much. Next thing is reference to the timing on the intersection at New Rand and 70. Have we received anywhere back from DOT as of yet? Nothing at all? Is it possible to see if they provide us any feedback on that, as to when they'll have it on their schedule to check it out? Is it possible?
Yes, yeah, I've, I've been trying to bug them, to no avail so far, but I will keep bugging.
Okay, yes.
We've had a couple of signal timing requests come through, and I have not heard back much on any of them at this point, so... But we'll keep trying.
Keep bugging them, I'm retired.
I'll tell them you said so.
All right, thank you.
Add some context.
Yes, and, and one last thing, can we get an update on the, the acute care center and the mental health center? Is that possible, as to the status of that?
Are we talking about very recent information?
Wait, med, nothing official yet. We should be hearing something in, maybe in the next couple of days pertaining to at least one of the projects. With the hospital, the acute care, they had the significant certificate of need, but with any time you have that, there's always an appeal period, and they're still in the appeal period. The initial notification was that it would be approved, but it's still under appeal. And then we don't have official word on the, the mental hospital yet. Should be hearing something in the next few days.
I think that's not officially in the public domain yet, is it?
Correct.
And we, we, we are, we're writing a letter in regards to, to this matter.
After the meeting, I thought.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, Mr. Director?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Ms. Behrger?
Just a couple things. I would agree with Mr. Vance's request for that timing at New Rand and 70. I was there today about 3:00, and the traffic was pretty heavy coming west on 70, but I think the light let two cars through from New Rand Road, and then it turned red again, and we were backed up, so that's, that is a problem. And the other thing, I'd just like to give a compliment to Parks and Rec for the way they handled the Easter egg hunt. I took my grandchildren, and it was just very, very well done, very well organized, very well coordinated, and the rain held off until at least my grandchildren got through. So thanks to Parks and Rec, and I also, the eggs that they used were not loaded with candy, they were, they had stickers on them for the children, so parents weren't mad at anybody that afternoon because their kids had too much candy. So thanks to them again.
All right, your kids were mad, but it was good. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Behrger.
Y'all seen the video of Ms. Behrger when they told them they could go, she was out there leading the pack.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I didn't see that.
I'll throw another water bottle at you.
I mentioned, thank Public Works again for the work on the unrestricted spring pickup. Yeah, I seen some of them from our house last week, because that was, we're on our route days, the work they do, they have a lot of stuff out there, a lot of, people get rid of all kinds of stuff, we'll just leave it at that. But it's a lot of time and effort, but people sure will take advantage of it. I don't know what the numbers will be, I know they'll get those numbers as, as they complete it and tell us how much they've, they had in yard waste and also other waste, but appreciate their work again.
Okay, thank you.
Everything's been said.
Matthew, Joe, okay. All right, I want to just take note of the presence of our, I believe it was our inspection director who sat through our meeting tonight. Good, good to see you, sir, and I wish you and your department continued, good wishes, all right?
In his defense, Mr. Murray, he's been here at every meet the last several meetings.
Well, I guess so.
Several, several weeks or months.
Well, in particular, I want to thank you for being here.
Make sure, he's been out here.
Trying to get acclimated to be in a department head.
Yeah, I get it. All right, I get myself in trouble sometimes trying to recognize people, I guess. All right, I wish you all a happy Easter, and a note, as the manager's mentioned, Town Hall will be closed this Friday, so a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved?
Okay, motion made, and seconded, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
And it's so ordered, this meeting, Corner Town Council is adjourned. Thank you all.